All right, so we need to resume our meeting.
Motion?
No, I don't.
All right, we'll move to the new businesses and.
Look at Mr. President.
No, you have to motion or resume, I think.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Well, I didn't hear a second after Hassan.
I did, I did.
Second, okay.
Second, I'm like freezing with that.
I know.
So the next, the first resolution, the new businesses, resolution 2023-123A, approving first reading and setting the date for the public hearing and second reading of the minority and ethnic or ethnic intimidation ordinance.
Motion, second.
All right, so discussion?
No, sir.
Counselor Hassan.
So you wanna, I mean.
We're voting, right?
I feel like we deserve some clarification.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, we designed this, we designed it at yours and others' behest. Don't really have too, too much to say, other than we don't have one on books right now. I believe the intent is to send a message for people to stop vandalizing and doing such things that we're having current issues with. Beyond that, I don't have too much to add. It's not a huge section. It is fairly self-explanatory.
Yeah, and I think it's just a form of protecting people's private properties from any kind of vandalism, because it's very common these days, and we felt obligated to address it and come up with something to stop people, because people think that this is unfunishable and they, you know, but also protect people's properties, whether it's a house or a car or anything, from removing objects, placing objects in people's property. So I think it's fair resolution and it will put a limit to this kind of vandalism.
I think the mayor and the council are very wise to have asked and had us draw this up. I think there were, I heard a public comment criticizing it, saying that there's a state. Well, just because there are other laws on the books doesn't mean that, you know, we can't control whether those crimes are prosecuted by the state. We can only control what we can control. So by putting these, this law on the books gives the officers of the chief and us as prosecutors and the city attorney's office just a very nice tool in our, in our toolbox to stop people from doing this or, you know, at least give us some control over it, to help us control the city. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we can go ahead.
Counselor five?
Yes.
Counselor Musa?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-123A, approving the first reading and setting the date for public hearing and second reading of the minority or ethnic intimidation ordinance approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 2023-124, approving the purchase of one vehicle for the Hamtramck Police Department.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have the chief here to defend this. I will note that it is narcotics laws.
Yes, so we are asking to purchase a Chevy Silverado pickup truck. This is a little bit more of a heavy-duty vehicle that will accommodate for police situations. It will allow us to comfortably see multiple officers in there plus equipment. It will primarily be used by our narcotics unit, who is currently using an older model used vehicle. So this will be replacing that vehicle. Cost is $50,983. It's coming from an existing vehicle that's on a lot, ready to go. So it's not like we're purchasing one out or building a police vehicle from, it's actually an existing vehicle. And it will come from narcotics coverage, not coming from general fund.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
Counselor El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Musa?
Yes.
Counselor five?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-124 approved.
All right. Next one is resolution 2023-125, approval of contract award for economic development strategic plan to Gold Track LLC.
Motion?
Second. Mr. Mayor, we have Ms. Faulkner here to discuss this. This is essentially a grant-funded item on the agenda, and she can explain.
Hi, everybody. Hello, Mayor and Council. So this item is request the approval of a contract award for the Hamtramck Economic Development Strategic Plan to Gold Track LLC. As the city manager stated, we did receive the grant from the federal government for economic development, and one part of that grant is developing a professional plan for economic development. So we published the request for proposals on June 26th. It was open for over a month, and we closed that down on July 27th. We got 12 responses from across the United States, one from Canada, and several locals in Michigan. We are very happy with the amount of people who are interested in the project. So part of the tasks for the firm, I'm not going to read all of these, but includes identifying the city's strengths and opportunities and considering how the city can make the most of its assets, providing a plan to improve the main commercial corridors, and which includes lowering the commercial vacancy rate on our corridors, determine what's needed to make the city more attractive to visitors, and recommend capital improvement projects for parks, parking, and other visitor and tourism-focused facilities, researching retail gaps in the city. There's a lot has to do with media and website, industrial sites, brownfield redevelopment, place banking, and just general policy advice to the community economic development department and the city council. I didn't go through all of those, but we were pretty specific in the types of people and experiences that we were looking for in the RFP. We had a selection committee of five people who reviewed all the proposals. We rated it and we scored each of, each of the proposals on 10 aspects. Gold Track LLC scored the highest, Business Flare was second, and Interborough was third. The highlights from Gold Track include that they had a very clear understanding of the proposal, and they responded to each item that we had requested. They had extensive professional experience relating to each item. For example, Alan Levy has 17 years of strategic planning experience, has been Detroit's director for neighborhood commercial revitalization. They're also partnering with public sector consultants based out of Lansing to give us a Lansing connection in terms of Michigan grants, Michigan law, Michigan policy, and they're also partnering with Global Detroit, which is based near us. They have a lot of experience with vacant sites, industrial redevelopment, and attracting companies to vacant sites. And part of the scoring process also included slightly favoring Michigan-based businesses or firms, because they're familiar with the landscape here in terms of laws and grants and Michigan policy. So that was the highest score in one. We, I don't know if you guys have any questions, but they'll be working on this for about eight months, and their final presentation will come back to city council and will get adopted formally at city council.
How much credit do you give?
From federal government grant is $308,726. So that includes the strategic plan, and then hiring a person for three years, not to do the day-to-day work, but to then implement the plan. So they would be working on all of these projects that the plan basically puts together.
How much credit do you give?
So this is just for the plan, not the person. So the plan, we got 12 proposals for the strategic plan. We haven't started yet looking for a person. That would be the next step.
Two? Yes.
Counselor Musa?
Yes.
Counselor El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-127 approved.
All right, thank you. So next one was removed. So we move to E, resolution 2023-127, approving general provisions governing the Hamtramck City Council.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, if we may, I'd like to have our city attorney speak on this one. He's looked at this extensively, and there is a significant amount of confusion on it, even with our own rates here as far as far as.
Yeah, so it's been brought to my attention, basically, that, and this was obviously brought when I wasn't here, but discussed, but it's been brought to my attention that we are, there's a attorney general opinion that says that you can't limit the public comment to half an hour or any certain amount of time. Now, there is an opinion, it's not a law, just the opinion of the attorney general, first of all. Second of all, excuse me? And from 1977, exactly. And it also goes on to explain that it's impractical sometimes. I mean, imagine you had a 12-hour public comment or whatever, trying to, that's also, it's not something that's practical. So that's why there's no law on it. It's sort of a gray area. What they do in numerous places suggests is, if you have a situation like we've had in the past where there's a polar opposite opinion on something, and you have a lot of people that have one opinion, a lot of people have another, what you can do is have the people with one opinion appoint somebody, point person, to make the comment, and then another point person for the other, or if there's only one person, one group that's trying to make a comment, one person. So that's how you can do to limit it. But if you want to do it as 30 minutes, other cities do. They do camp it up. We wouldn't be the only city, and there aren't any pushback or, to my knowledge, against them, other than people threatening to sue. But at the end of the day, since it's a gray area, you haven't seen any lawsuits, because there is no law against it. So if you want to adopt the rule as is, you can. If you want to change it, you can. It's up to you. But it is sound legally as it's written.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
When I first get elected here, there is the law two times public comment. It was only one time. And is the, is the before, like, not after? So there is no limitation, and still you can control your council. So this is the attorney general opinion. There is nothing here illegal, and the other cities doing that, too. So I think we are doing okay. We're not doing, nothing, we don't want to prevent anybody to discuss, and we already offer them to speak two times. It's the, when I came here first, it was the only first time. There is no second time discussion. There's some requests came from one of the Bill Myers and some other people, then we, we go the, after four years, we go the second opinion here, second time. So, so we had enough. And we, I don't want to stay here until 1:00, same people talking, same thing, again and again. Maybe they don't have any job. They only have the job these, to come and talk, talk, talk. That's all. With respect, the person have to think, one, one person came, give the city clerk 20 written things, 20 people name, make up name. This is very important work. Time is built. Important discussion, I will expect, and I respect. But the discussion, everything you do, everything negative, no good, no, that kinds of things, we're not going to accept it. So I'm going to stick and stay with this resolution.
Mr. Mayor? I just want to add, add one more thing. We did tweak it just a bit, because one of the previous sessions of council had said that you wanted 15 public comments to be available. And our concern was with this, that if we got 15 public comments prior to the meeting even started, anybody that would come here to speak in person wouldn't have an opportunity. So what we did do is write in here that it'll alternate between in-person and whether it be an email or post or deliver. That way it was sort of a fair mix.
So the total is now 30 minutes for both, both rounds of public comments?
It would, as it stands right now, it would be 30 minutes in the beginning of the meeting and 15 at the end. But of course, council can adjust as you like.
But can I speak also if we do the 15 emails? Let's say I can only read five within the first half hour of public comment. Does that mean that I read the rest of, but the limit already says in the order that's 15 emails, that you're allowing first 15 emails?
That's the maximum, the maximum time is 30 minutes.
So let's say I receive 15 emails.
She's asking if she would carry on.
Would I carry on those toward, to the second? No, to the second public comment?
Still, still, let me touch.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, counsel.
It's just, there's such tiny rules, there's too many small rules.
There's no rules.
You know, I went through this, you know, on the line with it. I have only one issue. You know, if we have a limitation to 15 emails and then public comment, I think if you change something, I have to go to max. If we can in-person first, instead of them waiting, because why am I going to have individuals who come here and then have to wait until emails be read, and then maybe they don't have a chance to, to say something? If we can change something on there that whoever comes in person first could speak, and then any email that's after?
I think they put to alternate, read some.
Alternate means one-on-one.
Yeah, so you get some.
Still, I don't know, the way I'm, if someone is in here, why am I going to wait?
Counselor, open your.
You know, and why not have to start with in-person first? We'll really put their time and came here first. And if we have enough time for email, they could be read.
The only caveat would be maybe if they're disabled, and that's why they can't come in, if they indicate their email or something, that would.
And that's something different. And if someone in the case will have a handicap, and that's different. You know, who can put them first?
But most people don't send me an email and say, "Rana, I'm handicapped."
If no one told that.
They don't, it's not, that's not how they.
They don't have to.
So I, I personally don't have a problem with time. I mean, I probably am the busiest person here, but it's okay, I can stay up to midnight. I mean, this is something that you have, you guys can decide. But personally, I enjoy public comments. I enjoy listening to different opinions, and I don't want to stretch or, you know, stop anybody from expressing their opinion. I get hundreds of emails. I mean, even the emails, I get to read them, too. So you guys can decide whatever you want, but this is my opinion. I mean.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Counselor five. The person who came in the audience, let them to speak the part, like this, this evening, Mr., you called somebody's name there, Mr. Faisal, he waited for like almost 45 minutes, then he left. People come in, sometimes they don't have enough time. So we do the first one who come here, take their opinion first, and the people who send the email, they're going to listen to us, be in the TV or the online, let them to the second. And I do not want to stop somebody's voice and limitation to. I'm very much agree with our chair, Mr. Galib. So if you want to change a little bit more timing, I'm okay with this.
Can I suggest something, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Maybe a half an hour in public comments and then half hour email. How often do we have that rush of public comments? Once or twice a year? So that means the max it could ever be on the busiest topic would be an hour's worth.
Mr. Chair?
So that would separate public in-person comments and email comments, make it two separate sections?
I think it's just the concern of some, where, because some of those emails or dropout were sounded in the past that it's from one person. You know, sometimes we got one time 15, 20 emails from a concerned Hamtramck resident that sounded almost the same and dropped by one person here. So that, that's an issue, but like you said, it doesn't happen that much, but I understand that's not acceptable. You know, to just enjoy typing something, 15, you know, email will count by one person.
And I also had, it says 15 emails, but it does not limit the dropping off.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, counsel.
Okay, so I, I'm very much having calculation right now, but Mr. Attorney, if Mr. Councilman said something, it's going to conflict, discrimination, that's why I'm thinking, yeah. So that's why we have to stay with that. Somebody said, well, my email go before him, and I'm a disabled person, I cannot come, and that is the one we only think about, that's why. So if you guys agree with this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, counsel.
You know, Mr. Mayor, both have, you know, I get it, but if I'm not going to have to let residents who put their time came here to wait until I read all the emails, and then 30 minutes pass by, and then they sit here, can't even speak. So if we have to do something regarding public comment, I think in-person who came here should be heard first. If there's another way that our city attorney could, I don't know, how can we do this with a handicap or someone that's disabled, but I'm not going to let any person that put their time came in here to sit down and hear all this, you know, us here speaking, and then 30 minutes passes by, oh, I can't even speak during the first public comment. So I don't know how I'm going to be, you know, doing what you guys.
I think we are already there. We are putting the card. After card, we are going the email, right?
What do you mean? Oh, after in-person? Typically, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're doing now.
Today I read one, there was only one. Like, if it's only one, I'll get it out of the way and.
Yeah, so it should not be.
However, you made the rules.
First, we go the card in person, then we go in the email. That is the previous practice.
I think what we can do is, we can provide, if you want to do it like that, what we could do is provide a form, maybe online, a PDF form, that you can check off if you have a disability and include that as an attachment in your email, you know, and that way, if your public comment, if you have a disability, that, that can be the workaround, but you could, and then otherwise, you do the, the in-person first and then the email.
Yeah, we are following that law from 26 years, I've been 16 years, I saw, the card.
I think he's right.
Yeah, so we're going to stick with that. You're right.
Yeah. I'm with that, but you, you're limited to 15 emails. Guess what? I'm going to, I'm going to check, I'm handicapped. And I'm going to have 15 emails, they all checked their handicap.
Then we just do one, one.
That's it. I mean. I don't know, to me, the way I look at it, I have in-person, I think it's be heard before anybody else. So I don't know how I'm going to do this.
Counselor El Samiri? Yeah, can, sometime when we have, when we have a limit for the email, like 15, can we cut the number for the email? We cut the number for public, public comment. Sometime they get some issue, you don't know, they can come over 30 people. We can tell the people and limit this number. Just cut the number for the email, leave, for my idea, leave the public comment the same way.
That's what we say. First, use the in-person, then go the email. We all agree there, right?
For the email.
Okay.
I can always post the emails we don't read onto.
That's another thing I would.
I don't have to read every email. If I don't have a chance to read, I can always post them on the agenda, on the minutes.
Just cut the number, like, limit five.
Yeah, I think that the posting it could relieve us of any liability whatsoever, if that's just, then you could do whatever you want with the email. If she posts them, we're good.
Okay. I'm saying, how are we going to really, this, on here now?
Make a motion to amend the resolution, basically, to what you're looking for.
Well, what are we looking for? Because it already says the public comments will be read, starting first with in-person comment, followed by comment received by postal mail, dropped off, or email, and then alternated until the maximum time has elapsed. So it's already, whatever you guys are discussing.
So right now, it's just basically back and forth, back and forth, starting with the in-person.
They can't handle it, they have to speak.
That's what they're saying.
You could choose.
No, in-person starts.
Starting first with.
In-person.
But then it goes back and forth. So if you want it just in-person first, and then the emails at the end of in-person, if there is less than 30 minutes of in-person, then you can have some email, and if there's not, the email just posted, and you can do it like that. Exactly, I think, Counselor, I think, Counselor Hassan, I think you're, I think you guys are on the same page, but not realizing it. So what you guys want is, I just want to make sure, you want public comments first, people can come here first. And then after those guys are done, then we do the email. Okay, so then what, the way to do it would be, okay, perfect. So the way we do it is we say 30 minute max, all the in-person first. If that is, in-person is all of them, that's all of them. The people that email, we can put them on the minutes and post them if we don't get to that.
But sometimes they get some issue, sometimes they get some issue. Some people, they can offer 30 people. They can tell them only 30 minutes.
Well, that's.
Sometimes, they get some issue, they're going to come 100 people. They can tell them, oh, only 20 people or 30 people, the other people.
Well, half of them, they have to tell.
They can.
You don't have to do anything for a disability anymore, since we're posting it by the way.
You can motion your man now.
I'd like to amend exactly the description what our attorney given to us. After this language, addition one language, we're going to post the.
No, 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 this language needs to change, because it's.
No, 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 hold on.
It's like the language that I'm saying.
Oh, my God, everybody wants to say that. So here's the one. I'd like to make motion to MN, second.
As. In-person first.
In-person first.
And then followed by emails.
Followed by email.
And then leftover emails posted.
Thank you. That is the discussion.
Done.
Posted means what?
I need a second, please.
Second.
Any leftover email, she can post in our website. It's still there.
On the agenda.
Or any councilman who want to read it, they can read it. They have a time.
We can throw it in four dots.
Yeah, yeah.
But the public comment is no limit.
Okay, is this for both the first and the second public comment? Like, how are you?
What exactly was your question on? I don't understand what you're asking.
Do the emails get read the second public comment if they're through?
Okay.
Yes.
Like, I, like, you're gonna be so many little emails under the.
Yes.
Yes, that's what we said, attorney said it.
Okay.
So I do read emails during the second public comment?
Yeah.
If you have.
First, there will be in-person. So basically.
So thirty minutes for both public comments?
Thirty minutes first, fifteen minutes after. So if the, during that fifteen minutes, we have time for email after the in-person.
And we're still doing three minutes with additional one minute for the first meet, for the first public comment?
Yeah, everything's same.
Two minutes after the.
Is there, would it just one minute?
One in the end.
But again, the, the second part, you stick to the agenda, then we need to change that.
Yeah, we're not, no, we changed that.
Did you already change?
Yeah, I changed that.
So I mean, you can talk.
So we can have a second. So if you don't have a discussion, let's go.
It's gonna be, there's no limit, there's no limit, a public comment, there's no limit.
What is that?
No, it's.
There is a limit.
Yeah, I don't wanna be, no.
Okay, then you would know, that's okay.
So they are saying thirty minutes and fifteen after.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote it.
Okay, well, we, I have to vote on the motion first, the ordinance. Okay, so, um, just one moment. Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri? You're voting on the motion? To change it to in-person first for thirty minutes in the third room for emails are posted?
No.
No. Councilman Abay?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, oh, well, motion approved?
It's a resolution.
It's the resolution, right?
No, amended.
No, uh, yes.
Amendment.
This is the motion approved.
I'd like to make the amended resolution motion into the floor.
Correct, thank you.
Second.
Just bear with me, please, there's a lot of rain, so I just need to be a little organized, just with, just bear with me. So has Councilman Hassan's motion for the amended resolution twenty twenty-three? Who seconded?
Kalil.
Okay, so now we're voting on the amended resolution twenty twenty-three, one twenty-seven.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Abay?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
No.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, amended resolution twenty twenty-three, one twenty, one twenty-seven approved.
All right. We'll see how this works. We can always revisit this.
Yeah, very good.
It's just a resolution.
Um, all right, so that was E. Uh, so D and F was, were canceled, so we move to G. Resolution twenty twenty-three, uh, dash one twenty-nine, approval of installation of new stop sign, new stop signs and traffic control orders.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, um, several councilmen weighed in on this, uh, at several locations. Uh, we had the chief, uh, investigate it and then make a determination, and she essentially agreed with it. So, uh, if you don't mind, let her give an overview of the locations.
Hi, so as you know, over the past several years, we've done, um, an effort to improve transit and vehicle, vehicular and pedestrian safety. Um, we've requested several locations over the years of additional new stop signs. Um, some of these locations that are included in this resolution were based on community and city council concerns. So I, as the city manager said, I did, um, investigate all these locations. Um, so I'm requesting that we add a stop sign on Gallagher Street at the intersection of Lehman, on Gallagher Street at the intersection of Jacob, on Ellery Street at intersections of Yee Mans, Brombeck, I'm sorry, Yee Mans Belmont and Troll Bridge. So there'll be three additional stop signs on Ellery, and then one on McKay Street at the intersection of Pulaski. Uh, and these, I think, will help slow down traffic. Um, a lot of these sections are, the Gallagher ones are where there's a school located. Uh, McKay Street doesn't really have any traffic control devices from Knif to Carpenter, with the exception of one. So this will help slow down McKay Street. And then Ellery, of course, we've got a lot of issues in that area, and these will help slow down that traffic also. Do you have any questions up here to answer?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, Fleming and Butler, they have a school there, and, uh, residents, you can. I drive this school here, very unsafe, but okay, stand for stop.
Right, so, yeah, so I, I did take a look at that location, because I was thinking Fleming in, uh, in addition, I've been over there earlier in the year when school was in session. And that area just gets so congested that if you put a stop sign there, you're gonna back traffic up onto Knif Street, which is gonna cause even more problems. We did add one at Casmere a few years back. Um, but I just think Burger Street is a really difficult location. Um, but I did look into that. Um, I can certainly, once the school year starts again, I can go back over there. But I know that I did notice that it just gets so congested there that you're gonna back up traffic down the Knif Street even more than it already is, and I just think that that's gonna cause more issues. But, you know, I can certainly. Absolutely, I can definitely, once school gets really going and that it gets colder out when people are starting to drive their kids more, I'll definitely take a look at that location again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. As I brought some of these, and some of, also some of my council members, I'll, I'll ask the city manager, can we add this resolution?
Can we add the resolution? Specific locations?
Yes.
Um, I would say just bring them to us, councilmen, so that the chief can look at the intersections to make sure, and then we can bring them back.
What, what, I think, one of, well, two of them are nearby school. I'm not in a way to do another study. Uh, one of them is Florian and, uh, Vermont, uh, Vermont?
Brawnback.
Vermont, whatever you call it.
Brawnback.
Vermont. What is it called?
Brawnback.
Run, run back. That's where Frontier or Hopeland School is.
Okay.
It's, uh, there, there has been many accidents, there are students out there. And also Gallagher and Norwalk.
So when, when we do do this, councilman, we also give a fire chief a weigh-in on it. Ultimately, the police chief sets the traffic order and brings it to, but he's not here, and I don't have the benefit of him to weigh in. Um, I would say if it wasn't for that, I would say between the chief and I could say, yeah, fine, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna take that.
So I did, um, in years past, I have, um, reviewed the intersection of Gallagher and Norwalk. The problem with that location is traffic turns onto Gallagher, onto Norwalk, so they're not stopping for anyone. I mean, I, I get that there's pedestrian traffic there, but that intersection, so if you think of, like, um, other streets where the street would turn onto Gallagher, so you're making everyone stop, kinda like we did with, um, because Jacob crosses over, Norwalk, since it runs away from Gallagher towards the school, there, the traffic on Gallagher isn't stopping for anyone, because Norwalk, they're not pulling out from Norwalk onto Gallagher, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, but how can we, because there's a lot of students on walk, and nowhere really stops.
So I think we might be able to look into doing maybe some.
Is that why the locations where we're adding speed humps now? John, is that the place? Is that one of the other members?
Without seeing the lesson again, you call.
So we also.
There's other things that we can.
Speed humps too, that we're analyzing.
Where we could possibly look at installing a crosswalk. There was a lot of signs and the signs that makes, that tell people when pedestrians are in the road, where you're gonna have to yield, that kind of thing. But again, as the city manager states, these two locations, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving these without the fire chief's input, um, especially on Brombeck, because that is one of our main fire routes. And also without looking at, um, the locations a little bit, like I said, Gallagher and Norwalk. That's really gonna be.
Councilman, can we circle back with you on this one? We, I, we wanna get you more.
So we can.
How about the other location, uh, Gallagher and Dremes?
Anybody has anything bring to us? It's not saving on Norwalk.
Right, yeah. Yeah, let us, um, take a look at, I'll write all these locations down and take a look at them.
So we, we, we do go out, look at the traffic flow, see how it's working, I mean, it's.
Well, I'm gonna send you guys an email, and hopefully next council meeting.
Please. Yes. Send it the email, and we'll, whatever, we'll, we'll bring it to you.
The name is, the name is, they're gonna be different in the, maybe.
Yeah, I will take a look, um, that one.
And there's, um, Florian and.
Florian and Brawnback, I have all written down.
Street after that, you cross.
Florian, Brawnback, Dremes, and what?
What is it called?
The name is in Gallagher.
Oh.
Yeah, there. And you said on Brawnback, councilman, in what?
Leitham.
Are you talking just south Florian or north Florian?
Florian, Leitham, there's a stop sign there? I thought there was one in Florian and Leitham.
No, on Leitham, there is no stop sign. On Florian, there is a stop.
On, we cannot put a stop sign back?
No.
Not ongoing.
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
At Jacob Street, uh, at the stadium, I'm sorry. I was there, people coming from the corner, very high speed, after the game over or something like that. And it is, sometimes it's dangerous. Can you, can you study with those speed? And do something with the speed up or stop thing? Speed up is good enough for the two. Okay, from the corner to there.
Jacob and where, sir?
Here, from Jacob, from Conan to Gallagher. If you put the sample speed up, it didn't help.
So.
There's speeding there.
So on the speed humps, councilman, for the moment, we're just looking at the ones by the school, because as we, you know, do the service lines repave, we're adding speed humps to the paving as we go. So I don't wanna potentially put a speed hump in that we may be coming through the next year or so and then ripping it out. Um, but what is it, what's, uh, the academy over there?
Oh, okay.
It is by the, uh, stadium.
So we are adding a stop sign on Gallagher and Jacob. But I see what you're saying, from Conan to Gallagher. Yeah, and we can, you know, I can, I can definitely, um, because like I said, we are putting a stop sign there at Gallagher and Jacob.
Check out, study with those speed, and see if they can keep them up.
Okay, and I can certainly, um, send that to the officers to make them aware that that's a location that you're noticing a lot of, a lot more speeding and things like that, so. We can certainly.
Especially from Jamie Lova.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything that comes to mind in the next couple of days, please send to us, and the chief and staff will analyze those locations and get your feedback, and then we potentially could get those to you at the next meeting, if you want as well.
Well, I'm just adding, so from now, she, she knows what we're, we're referring to and talking about, so you can start knowing, you know, her homework, that's the chief, fire chief. And then also for a crosswalk, I'm gonna also add that to my resolution next month, and that's a crosswalk from Yemen, from JC to, from Yemen Cafe to Hamtramck Market.
Yemen Cafe, okay. So, councilman, we, we, we gotta be, it's a lot harder for us to do county streets, like across Joseph Campo. That is actually one we have in the works, um, where we're actually designing right now, where we potentially might redo the, redo the parking in front of Veterans Memorial Park right now and then add a crosswalk, but we ultimately have to have county's approval on that one.
I know that.
Um, that's a tough one, considering. Our DPS director has been trying to get ahold of the county director for the last three day, or two days, uh, and has yet to even respond. So that takes, I don't know that we can bring that up.
Well, I, please, I'm saying, bring that up to.
It's a hundred percent in the works.
Because lots of people do a cross between Hamtramck Market, Yemen Cafe, you know, and reverse.
Hundred percent agree with you. I, I would personally like to see that as well.
And then you have parents and kids that do walk from Goodson and Danforth, you know, and it's like no really stops in there.
Right, so right, right now, we, while we have some preliminary drawings of that area that, um, Hennessy engineers brought, you know, put together for us, um, our hope is to get some more preliminary drawings from Hennessy from some other areas that also correlate to the Joel Lewis Greenway. It's all kinda one big shot. And then our hope is to take all of that with your blessing to the county and ask for all these changes in one shot.
All right, so these are future projects to work on. Can, any other suggestion about this stop sign? We can call it.
Thank you.
Take one second, come a second. Uh, city manager, councilman, Mayor Portomax for the Conan Street, but you know they are from Aladdin and by the, uh, Kamar and Conan. Can you put like a crosswalk sign there?
No.
It is very dangerous.
Same thing with the county, councilman, Conan is controlled by the county.
We're gonna be questioning, and you're gonna do a study.
But we also have the dilemma of across there is Detroit. So, um, half of that right there is hamtramck, and half is Detroit. So not only would we have to interface with the county for permission, but then we'd also have to interface with Detroit. Not out of the wrong possibilities, but it's just gonna be that much more difficult for us to do.
All right, so that's another thing to look at in the future.
Johnny, that's your.
H, H was removed.
No, we gotta vote on this now. Are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Abay?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
What you want now?
This is for the stop sign. You're putting the stop sign.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the happy man.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three, one twenty-nine approved.
All right, so, uh, one thirty was removed, uh, so resolution twenty twenty-three, one thirty-one, approving the first reading and setting the date of, uh, for the public hearing and second reading of the amendment to business license ordinance.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
I thought you were gonna second.
So. So this one actually was spurred by Councilman Choudhary. Um, as it currently stands, we did amend the business license a few years back. Um, however, this one little area that we're trying to fix here is a little bit cumbersome for us to actually manage. And we've rewritten it at the councilman's behest, and we think we have a good solution. It's dealing specifically with late fees for business licenses. Um, and, uh, Oday, you did rewrite this, can I just give that a quick synopsis?
Um, yeah, let me just pull it up, I'm sorry. Basically, we changed it to, instead of a dollar a day or whatever it was before, basically every year already, you guys set fee schedules, so the council would set a fee schedule for how much it is. And it's not gonna be for days, for thirty days, so it's not gonna be as cumbersome. Um, and it's up to the, the council.
Can I speak on this, since it's my office? Thank you. So like you're saying, what it was scheduled originally is it's a hundred dollars for the year. If there are fifteen days, there's a little grace period. So it's fifteen days, after fifteen days of the business license being expired and not paid into, we add the additional fifty dollars. And yes, it was a dollar a day, but so that we don't have to go into the system and add a dollar a day, we do thirty dollars every month. So every fifteenth of the month, after that first initial late fee, which was fifty dollars, you pay thirty dollars, thirty dollars. So I thought you put it in as, it still gets the fifty dollar late fee, correct?
It's up to the, it's up to the council.
So the initial fif, after fifteen days, I believe it was, uh, analytic assessment.
Right.
Each thirty days, something else would be assessed.
Yeah, so the fifty dollars is in.
What that gets.
The initial, right.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Oh, one at a time, sorry.
You're gonna, don't come and speak, and then.
My question is, uh, fifteen days, yes, can I do?
Uh, yes, he has first, that's the question.
Yeah, I know, I have the business from like over fifteen years. This business license, here, they're gonna be expired April thirty?
April thirty.
Yeah, what's the date when we send the letter?
About the expiration?
Yeah.
We send it at the beginning of March, you have two months in advance.
The, I know before, like, before we came, like, ten years ago, uh, they send the letter after the winter time, when they send the taxes bills, over a month. They send everyone, even business license for the rental or business license for the other.
We do send renewals.
Yeah, all of whom they send them one time. Everybody they know, everybody. If the people they're missing, they're gonna be late fee. I paid about late fee like many times, because I know I make a stay. We need to, uh, we need to leave, like, this issue same way. We didn't need to change anything. That's what I am saying.
Okay.
My question is there, uh, fifteen day grace period, am I right?
Same.
Correct.
So then you're telling us the fifty dollars for the charge, what can you tell them?
So after fifteen days, automatically it's a fifty dollar late fee.
So for thirty days or for the whole?
Okay, let me, let me say it this way. Business license expires April thirtieth. May fifteenth, you'll have a fifty dollar late fee on it. That's in the ordinance. What's added, instead of, what was in the ordinance is fifty dollars on the fifteenth of May and then a dollar a day after. Oday took out the dollar a day and put it on responsibility on the council to add it in the, the fee schedule to say what is.
Every thirty days after that. So instead of, so basically after fifteen days, thirty days after the fifteen days, they get a fee.
What is the fee? You guys are going to schedule, you pick the fee. So instead of it being a dollar a day after the fifteenth.
Like three hundred and sixty-five dollars a year.
So I'll give you an example. You can have fifty dollars on May fifteenth, and then every thirty days, you wanna add a hundred dollar late fee? That's your decision. You wanna add a ten dollar late fee every thirty days after the main fifteenth, you know? That's your decision.
My suggestion, I wanna get the business.
Right now, right now, how we do it is fifty dollars on May fifteenth, June fifteenth is thirty dollars, July fifteenth is another thirty dollars, and the thirty dollars added, so.
Nah, my, my opinion, it could be less than thirty dollars.
And then at what point do we keep charging late fees for twelve months until they pay the next business license? So those are your decisions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
City manager? Okay, I don't know. So previously was the first thirty, fifteen days, fifty bucks, correct?
Correct.
And then it's a dollar every day.
But we would do thirty dollars at the end.
I get it, so, is it, now, the question is, is it a system that you have to go on and put a dollar?
It's not, no. So that's what I'm saying, instead of doing it, so that's what I said, we did fifty dollars on the 15th, and instead of going in and doing a dollar a day, we just tack on the next late fee, June 15th, which was thirty dollars. So instead of doing a dollar a day, we waited a full month and just thirty dollars.
The system is a little confusing.
I got, so you're.
It was actually, it was, it was simpler than what the wording was in the ordinance.
So your, your.
We go into the system, we add a thirty dollar late fee to everybody who's pending.
So your opinion is to remove the dollar?
That's not my opinion, though. This is.
You know what I'm saying, you're saying to remove the dollar.
Oh, this is what we, yes.
Your recommendation is to remove?
Well, no, I'm gonna tell you what we did, instead of doing a dollar a day, because it was too much, we couldn't handle it. So if I gave you an invoice, and then you come in to pay it three days later, you're gonna owe three more dollars, I have to print you up another invoice with the, you know, like.
That's what I'm trying to get.
So, yeah, so instead of doing a dollar a day, we just waited for thirty days to pass, we tacked on a thirty dollar late fee. Wait another thirty days to pass, tack on another thirty dollar late fee.
So why now put it back to council, so whenever they wanna change?
Because some people don't wanna pay late fees when they pay their business license late.
Everybody they pay late fee, everybody they pay late fee.
So if it's, if it's always been a dollar a day, a dollar a day, that's common sense, thirty dollars a month, right?
Yeah, that's how.
So why not put it in this resolution, thirty dollars a day?
Thirty dollars a month.
I mean, a month, keep it the way it is, why we have to go back to council every time? I don't.
Well, it's not every time, it's just every year, you, you do the fee schedule, and it's just in there, and you re-up it. If you guys decided you wanted to change at that time, you could, but most of that stuff stays pretty consistent. Um, I wouldn't in trying actually amounts in ordinance, because, well, frankly, ordinances are hard to change, and amounts change, you know, it might be, you know, five, ten years from now, it might take it two dollars a day.
So you can make it a fee schedule and still do thirty dollars a month.
That's what I'm saying, why?
It's just that it's your decision to do it every year, you vote on it as a fee schedule.
If it's, if it's always been a dollar a day, okay, keep a dollar a day, or stay, do it monthly, let's say thirty dollars every month, and then why do they have to come back to council every time? It's been always.
Well, you've seen the fee schedule, but like Max is saying, sometimes it becomes redundant, like the dollar a day, maybe in a few years wanna change, you wanna go through public hearings, do an ordinance change based on a late fee, you could just put a late fee, I get it, you could just put a late fee on a, a fee schedule and make it thirty dollars.
Change all the fees in the ordinance?
Yeah, you could make it thirty dollars a month on a late.
So that council just sets it annually, but it's, you do it in one fell swoop.
It could be the same as it is in the ordinance.
What if a person comes on day twenty-five before the thirty days? If there's no one dollar a day, would he be charged?
It's just the late, the first fifty dollar late fee. Cause the one dollar a day is, it's, it's not, it's not workable, you can't work with doing a dollar a day every day.
I was seeing that that is a big problem, but it's not.
So that's what you can do.
We're making it work, the councilman brought it to us.
So, so the ordinance has the fifty dollar late fee, your decision as a council would be on the fee schedule to do, if you want, thirty dollars a month late fee.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
If Mr. Councilor, so, we have the law, right? We have the ordinance right now, as of today. Any problem for them? I didn't see any problem. So, the resolution came, it's getting more problem now.
Yeah.
City clerks, I cannot keep track of how many dollar, how many day, councilman has to bother all those things. I wanna stick with the old resolution, old law, if we don't have any problem. If city can survive, unless very specific, something happening right now, given city has the money, and given why money, supporting the license, I think I don't have no complaint, nobody complained about what we are in system. So discussion right now, as of now, I'm gonna vote for no, I don't wanna make no more complication?
Yes.
No more conflict. If attorney is okay with it.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
I haven't, no, no, in Chavi, you know, he's not able to defend his, so.
Mr. Chair. I have a last thing to add there. How much the fee for the license per year?
It's a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars. It's a hundred dollar fee per year, and we're gonna charge the late fee for three hundred sixty dollars, which should be fair.
It should be fair, some people pay, don't pay late.
They're, they're gonna pay for license a hundred dollars per year.
Okay.
And we charge them, they do not, or pay for those, and we charge for them three hundred sixty dollars.
You're, the three sixty, I'll take it as an approximate number, but I see where you're going.
So, my question is there?
Is it fair?
No, it is not fair.
You don't think it's fair to turn to?
I don't think it is fair. The, and the license pay a hundred dollars, and he did not pay for the one year, any reason. He made a mistake, so he paid for three times, three and a half times.
But you know that he can also get a five hundred dollar misdemeanor ticket for it too, so that's another five hundred dollars. But it's a law, it's an ordinance, so you're asking our fees, okay, it's an ordinance, it's a law. Like, you either pay a late fee, or you're gonna get a misdemeanor in your, and then if you have a business and I give you a ticket for not having a business license, not only do you have to pay five hundred dollars, you gotta have an attorney come with you to court. So the simplest solution, pay your business license on time.
We should have some chronic offenders.
Yeah, yes.
Or something bad.
Let's go finish up.
Do you have a business?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Father.
I want to kinda clarify to, uh, Mr. Councilman Musa, previously it was a dollar, 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 dollar. Now they're trying to make it where it's monthly, thirty days. So it's either we choose that, hit them for every thirty days, or keep it the way it is for a dollar. So.
Those are the same, like, I'm not, it's, you're saying the same thing, you're giving their thirty dollars a month, one dollar a day.
That's a change, that's all the change you guys have here is switching.
But I am do, like, I'm telling you personally, the ordinance says a dollar a day, yes, but I don't input one dollar a day, I wait till the full month passes, I just input a thirty dollar late fee. So, good to, good to work there. I, so I sort of like, I don't wanna say I'm playing with the ordinance, but it is sort of the same, but I'm not putting a dollar a day.
And that's what I was trying to clarify to him, that's the only difference, that from now and previously, that was a dollar a day, that you had to enter a dollar a day. Where now, we're, we, Mr. Councilman Chowder is trying to put it where it's every thirty days.
No, Councilman Chowder is saying it's fifty dollar late fee on the 15th, and then any late fee after that, you decide on the fee schedule what you want it to be. So every year you can change it, like you're gonna say, I don't want a late fee, or I want a fifty dollar late fee.
That's my problem, I only have to come back to council.
Let's, let's vote on this.
Let's go.
Yeah, let's, yeah, vote for now.
Okay. We know what we're going on, right?
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Fai?
No.
Councilor Musa?
No.
Councilor Samiri?
Uh, no.
Councilor Hassan?
No.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-131 approved. Uh, not approved. Not approved.
But I can make someone happy.
J, resolution 2023-132 approving purchase of smart safe for Treasury Department.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, so basically, um, this is a new technologically advanced safe that we would install in our treasurer's office. Um, it's, uh, does a lot of things. Uh, it no longer requires us to go to the bank daily, which has its own hazards within it. Um, it automatically processes the checks as it comes in, and basically sends it to the bank, it automatically processes the money. Uh, and essentially, you know, after so much time of collecting money, we send an armored car to collect it, and it's just safer all around, it's much more efficient for our Treasury Department in the endgame. So, um, wasn't too unreasonably priced for what it does, and increases the efficiency. Um, Amir, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, uh, this particular initiative with not only streamlining the operation of the Treasury Department, but it'll save us money in the long run, because what happens is that when we deposit money, uh, in the night box at the bank, it is done after maybe a couple of days, collecting the cash and then taking it to the bank. And that itself is a very risky operation that somebody's, and sometimes we ask the police to, you know, give us escort. So you've, you've got, you know, time that is being spent by police, time that's being spent by the Treasury people, going in, depositing that money, and then that deposit will sit overnight in the bank, and then whenever the bank will have the chance, on the next day or the day after, it'll get credited to your account. What this safe does is connect it through the internet, to the bank, to your account. So the moment you put the money in its drawer, it's logged in, it's like an ATM for us. So when you deposit through the ATM, this is how this works. So the money gets credited immediately to your account, and starts earning interest, you know, right away. Uh, and plus, you don't have to go to the bank anymore, we do have brings come in to pick up our coins from the parking meters, you know, once a week, and they can come in and they can take this cash from the safe and, uh, take it to the bank. So streamline the whole process, it gets, it's just ready for the money, uh, you know, upfront, and it saves us time and effort from the city employees, as well as the risk involved in taking money and cash to the bank.
How much the monthly fee we are paying for, and how much the machine costs us?
Machine is costing you around a little over fifteen thousand dollars, monthly fees in terms of, uh, you know, we're losing like four to five days of cash not getting credited to your account. So two hundred thousand, hundred thousand, you know, eighty thousand, hundred fifty thousand, depending on the amount of cash. So that's money that you're losing. Uh, and then, when the bank processes it for you, it charges a certain amount of money for, for you. Then the cost of the employee spending half an hour, two an hour, you know, every time they go to the bank, and it could be one to two to three employees. So if the police escorted, the two police officer plus an employee, their time cost, you know, so it, it all adds up.
My question is, the brings help you to pick up the power from there?
No, 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 brings already comes and charges us. So it's part of that.
So they have extra charge for this?
No, no, they won't be having extra charge for this, because brings already is charging us for picking the coins. So when they come to pick the coins, they'll just take the, the notes as well, the currency notes, and they go and take it to the bank, so they'll just take it for them. So there is no additional cost as such to brings.
Mr. Chair. But, you know, I think we just want this, I think it's, you know, we're, 2023, it's time for technology, and this is the, I, I read about it, I did a little search on YouTube, but the thing that it does is kinda saves some time, you know, employment, where instead of having, like you said, employees and just a score. One thing tells me having some machine, ours needs a lot of money, so then we're going to move money, so we have to have this machine.
Yeah, I mean, there are times when we take two bags, you know, especially during tax season, and when people are paying the property taxes and stuff like that, there's a lot of money that goes.
That shows that we're, city are doing good, so we're getting a lot of money now, we actually have to purchase a machine to.
Well, we should have done that some time ago, because it's so inefficient, the way we are operating.
So it processes this, checks, cash?
Yeah.
What about credit cards?
Well, credit cards is already being done right now. That's, that's already been done.
That's.
What we're doing is, this is just for the currency, the other thing that we have added is that we are going to get a scanner from the bank, and they will install that scanner, and we will scan all the checks that we are getting, uh, so we don't have to take the checks, uh, to the bank anymore. Uh, and that again will save us a lot of money, because the banks charge us significant amount of fees for processing these checks, because they scan it on our behalf to, you know, credit to our accounts. Here, what we're doing is we're going to be doing it ourselves, and that scanner is connected again to our bank account. So we are just trying to, you know, make the, uh, process much more efficient, uh, in the Treasury Department.
We have a safe money for this machine between the people when we drop out to the bank.
Sorry? We have a safe, like a safe is shared. Well, this, this itself is a safe. It, it, it is like, you know, like you have the ATM, uh, this is a safe, so the month the money goes in, nobody can access it. Brings has a key to it, when they come to open it, uh, and they can take the currency, draws out, they can empty it and take, save a shot.
He comes and opens it, takes a month.
So, I'll give you one negative thing, and then I'll approve it. Negative thing is here, trustability. So I'm putting the five thousand dollar, saying the brings system, I'm putting the five thousand dollar, I put the three thousand dollar, accounting five thousand dollar to the money account. There is any chance, any employee error?
No, because brings?
No, 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 you dropping the money.
Anybody with a number?
No, no, I have experience in your city. You're dropping the money.
I'm not dropping any money.
Example? Example, okay, what do you question doing?
Depositing.
Depositing.
The money.
Dropping the money is depositing to the.
Where, to the bank?
No.
He's on the machine.
To the machine?
Yeah.
Okay, machine, you're not depositing the money in the machine, what you're doing is you're feeding currency notes to it.
Oh, so you feed it?
You feed it.
Oh.
You feed currency notes to it, and as you feed it, it's.
It's counting automatically?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 it's, it's, it's automatically counting it.
More, more advanced, what I thought.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Like an ATM.
No, no, that's good. Here, I have some experience.
No, no, it's not, it's not that.
I understand. Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, like, isn't vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, ready to vote?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we are being creative, you know, serving our, I wish we can be creative on serving the residents too, so. It seems like at every meeting, we are coming up and do stuff for us, for the city, all, but not much for the residents, so, um, I'm okay with that, but I hope to see more work for the residents.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the next four alleys.
Well, I was adding, I will leave some of the stress today with the additions that we have, but.
This machine, they got warranty, will fix it sometime, they get some happen.
It, it will be covered by the bank, because we're buying the machine from the bank.
They get some happen, the bank, you fix it.
So they will come and fix it.
Okay. Alright. Ready to vote?
Uh, Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilor Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-132 approved.
Alright, thank you, so K and L will remove, um, from the agenda, and so we will move to P, which is, uh, approving, uh, resolution 2023-135, approving award to 232 alley construction design and construction service to Hennessy engineers.
Motion.
Second.
Alright, discussion. Mr. Mayor, uh, as yourself and council requested, you guys wanted more construction, so we developed, uh, seven more alleys to add to the several we are currently doing right at the moment, and we hope to have every one of these completed before the snow flies, barring any unforeseen events. Um, it's a lot of alleys, um, and we spread them around where we think it would be the greatest impact at this time for the community, um, and we hope to keep up the pace as best we can.
Alright.
I believe Amir wanted.
Can I just add to this? We are going to spend about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on the alleys, which should be completed, I think, by the end of this month, or early next month.
The two days, probably.
Oh, this, yeah, and then the other seven alleys that we are adding, uh, which should be done, you know, hopefully by end of October or something, they would be totaling around eight hundred thousand, you know, so between six and eight, we're already talking about one point four million dollars. On top of that, we'll have, you know, about hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in Hennessy design fees and, you know, project management fees. We had budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for alleys in 2324 budget. We are not utilizing at least a million dollars more from the fund balance to pay these alleys. So, you know, just as a response to what you said earlier, there is a significant amount of money that we are going to spend in the next few months on alleys, on road resurfacing, and about one point five million dollars on water and sewer from their fund balance to address lead service lines. So we are, uh, enhancing the speed of our lead service line, uh, you know, efforts by not just increasing the amount of lead service lines we are gonna do, uh, from one contractor, we are going to try and engage another contractor to add more lead service lines to it. So there is potentially, we are spending more than three million dollars on just these projects on there, and this is on top of, on top of this, we've added, you know, those street, uh, sweepers, and I can tell you from two months ago, the streets and the main, uh, you know, streets look a lot cleaner and a lot neater, and there's a huge change in the way the city looks today than it used to, you know, two months ago. So I think all this investment that we have been doing, uh, in equipment and in everything will show a huge change, you know, going forward in the next, uh, few months.
Alright. Thank you. That's what we want to hear.
Well, that's what I'd like to see also.
You ask, and we, uh, provide it.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor Samiri.
That's all the stuff, he said they're gonna be up till about everything is done.
All the alleys?
Well, so I, I.
About the street? About the street?
We'll get the.
John, uh, please give a little bit of timelines on this, 'cause you're a little bit more familiar with timelines than I am.
We got lucky, the contractor that's currently doing the, oh, East Joseph Campo Alley now, got a big cancellation, so I talked to him on a job site, and he says council is gearing to do more alleys. Would you be able to move to some more projects? And he was happy.
How do you want?
Right now, he's behind, like, the main street doing that, and the Joseph Campo alley is what they're doing now, then they're going over to the next one, then he's got a big block of time opening up in October. So he was gonna do a two and a half million dollar project down river that got canceled or moved to next year, so I told him, depending on what council said, I could probably keep him busy.
Would you like the street off the alleys? Would that be helpful?
Can you get reading, you know, the ones that are working now, which ones are that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
John, you got it, or you want me to do it?
Um, you are.
Okay, I'll do it. All right, so currently speaking, we are in the East Joseph Campo alley from Comer all the way to PNC, which is just north of Kniff.
Okay.
Um, we've already went past Casimir, and we're now working south of Casimir. Everything north of Casimir is already curing. I checked it out today, they got it all ripped out, all the way pretty much right to PNC right now. I suspect probably tomorrow they're gonna pour that, barring any unforeseen events. Then they're going to be doing the North Kniff Alley between Joseph Campo and Mitchell, which is basically the T intersection behind PNC as well. So everything behind PNC will be done, all the way up to Comer, essentially. Then soon as they're done with that, they're moving down to the south end of the city, and they're doing from Roosevelt to Goodson in the East Joseph Campo Alley. They're gonna take a break, and then they're gonna come back, and I don't know exactly what their start date is, but we'll have it for a couple more months before the snow flies. And then they're going to do, now, not necessarily exactly in this order, but we're going to do the East Moran Alley, which is actually the Cone Alley between Comer and Casimir, that runs, for to put in a perspective, behind Aladdin and several other businesses there. Then we're doing the East Joseph Campo Alley from Goodson to the dead end at the park, which, to put in perspective, is behind Shiva Yaman Cafe and the businesses over there, which will tie in nicely to the one we're doing now, and eventually queue us up to do the North Goodson, which runs the length of Veterans Park. We'll talk about that later, we got a good plan for that as well. Then we're also looking to the West Joseph Campo Alley from Carpenter to Nibel, to put that in perspective, the Tire Place on Carpenter from there to roughly behind the doctor's office to Nibel. The next one after that, we're doing the North Holbrook Alley, basically from Cherist all the way to Conant. So, perspective, behind Holbrook Market, all the way to Conant. It's a very large section, needs it very badly. The next one up is the East Conant Alley between Oliver and Dorothy. I don't have a business over there, actually I do, across from the old Masat, which is now Z Box, directly across from that, so... And then the last one on this list will be the East Joseph Campo Alley from Dan to Council. Put in perspective, Councilman helping with the mosque over there.
Algas Ali Mosque.
Yes, the Algas Ali Mosque, directly behind that one, which also brings us right on to Dan Street there, which we're hoping to do within the next few cycles here as well.
How about the other one from the CBS to Avaline?
We are hoping to catch that in the next big swoop. There is some money that we're aware of that is coming to the city that we're trying to work out now, and if all goes well, we can do another huge batch coming up, but we'll leave the whole, we do that one just yet because it's not finalized.
Can you do that on the list?
You might have our staff have a connection.
You know, just one more thing I wanted to add, when we did the street cleaning through the street sweepers, we have tons and tons of, you know, material that's sucked up and cleaned from the streets. How many containers would be, you know?
For the last container, the truck couldn't have left it.
Yeah, it was so heavy.
They had actually take the back hole and remove some of the debris out, the dumpsters.
So several containers worth of mud and debris has been cleaned from the street. Now, all of that would have gone into the sewers, and those sewers would have been clogged.
The last dumpster was twenty-five tons.
Yeah, so that, that...
With dirt.
That is, you know, that is the dividend that we are seeing from investing in these machines. And what that does is, once you clean the sewers or you reduce the mud from the sewers, that's gonna alleviate, to a certain extent, the flooding that we get, you know, with the rains. So it's all connected, and I think we need to see it through the larger picture to see what the effect it's gonna have on the city.
So, Councilman, I just wanted, we have one more thing to the question we had about that particular alley. And Councilman Samiri is speaking about the East Joseph Campo Alley from Avaline to Holbrook. It's bad, we do need to fix it, but it's a huge, very long alley.
Oh, this one is huge, but the other one from the PNC bank to Comer is not huge.
That's huge too, 100%.
Oh, but they're going past, and the other one?
It's the price, Councilman.
From Comer to Carpenter is not huge.
So the thought process on this one, Councilman, was the price tag, I believe, is over $300 or more. Was it $350 or $400,000 for that alley alone? And we're trying to spread it around a little bit, but it's very high on our list.
Other one is nothing, very important.
I hear you, Councilman, it's, I'm trying to get into the next batch.
Did you ever make a next list?
We're trying really hard to get that, maybe even sooner than later. So if everything works the way we're hoping, that could be sooner...
There's a potential of another 20 alleys next...
Yeah, if all goes well, we might have a whole huge list coming even bigger than this.
All right. I mean, why this company that is not working only every time in late? They need to start from April, they start from June, and they lose the time.
So part of the thing is with this, Councilman, is that the city was essentially working at a set pace for quite some time, and all our contractors had basically adapted to that pace, which was fine. Our mayor and council, as it stands right now, wants to pick up that pace significantly, but it takes us a little while to get them going. It's sort of like, you know, once you get rolling, you get rolling, but we gotta, we gotta get a move, and we are. I mean, we're bringing other contractors in, we're, the speed has increased significantly. I mean, we're doing a lot more alleys than we did last year, we're doing, hopefully on track to do a lot more service lines. We're paving all the streets this year, which, we didn't pave any, I think, the past two years, if I'm not mistaken, so, you know, we've significantly emptied up, but it takes a little bit of time to get the ball rolling.
But the grants, we can't advertise for contractors.
Well, that's an issue too, a lot of the grants that we're dependent upon, we can't even bid them out until we get the grant in place, because it'll basically be, it'll forfeit, not forfeit, but... We won't be able to pay for that stuff, because the grants require certain things to do.
Because this alley, they're gonna keep working all time, every year, not only this year, they're gonna be 10, 15 alley. Every year, we're gonna find out how to fix it.
Well, we're working real hard to keep them.
All this is top industry, they're gonna fix it this year, but they're gonna put the end of list, like when we have the other block alley, years and years.
We're trying to bang these out as fast as we can, Councilman.
If this company is not enough working, why do you find out another company to fix?
Some of the problem with the bidding that Hennessy has faced, that we don't get any responses. A lot of people, a lot of contractors don't want to work in half-traffic, one, because the market...
Why is that in half-traffic, there's no money?
Well, they don't want to, they have a hard time parking their vehicles, so when they have the choice of working in cities that are nice and open with big streets, they don't particularly put in a bid.
When we have the construction, they're gonna close, it's gonna, it's gonna try to put a separate line. They're gonna close the whole block.
Right now, Councilman, construction is running rampant. I mean, everybody's building everything, and they're not hungry. The contractors are not hungry right now. They work everywhere, they can pick and choose what they want, costs are higher, but, you know, when that turns the tide and, you know, contractors are anxious for the work again, prices will go down, we'll get a lot more responsiveness, but, you know, we flow with the market to some degree.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to clarify to our residents, John, when are these alleys will be done? Not in exact month, on record.
These alleys, according to our contractor, if you can start them in October, they should be done this year. They worked on one last year in December.
So they're gonna start in October. The reason the delay between...
They have another job, Councilman, so they're finishing our, the ones we got going right now.
And then they still have another.
They have to go to another job. They have a cancellation in October, and we got fortunate that we, we're basically tying them up at that point. So we're monopolizing upon their...
They're not gonna be gone for long, because they still have the T, they finished the T area, they still have that other alley, so by the time they wrap those other two alleys up, it's gonna be, they're gonna be in September anyways.
And then added to Councilman Samiri, this company has taken a while to do these alleys. So how come we're waiting to, until we get more complaints and more issues, why not start finding another contractor that can also do the other side? What's the issue? Why we can't get one and one company to start doing them?
Well, we extended the contract on this contractor to do the alleys, now we'd have to go off a rebid, which would be another delay and process of trying to get somebody in here. So the contract would significantly slow it down, actually. That's the contract extension that you approved in the last...
Not to mention the pricing could skyrocket on us. We've locked him in right now.
About the trees, when we have like a list, like over three months, we wait for the list, for cut the trees?
So we're actually going to start looking at that contract.
This company, they cast something this year's in half-traffic, the trees?
Oh, gosh, yes, we've done a lot of trees.
Can we see the list?
From Limbwalker?
Oh, this year's. Can we see the list?
I probably spent $60,000, $70,000 getting trees this year.
We need to see the list, where we down for cut the trees.
I wait for it.
We wait for three trees, three months, we wait for the list.
All right, one more thing, because of the roads, I noticed today, I got calls that, was it Edward or Edwin in Buffalo? What is that street? They're doing something over there, so that service lines. And now you have trucks, bus, all these used trucks are driving through there, because they do to a sign, send them to go on Buffalo. So when they try to make a right on that street, what is Edwin? What is that street called?
They're doing them on Edwin.
Okay, so they're trying to make us right on Edwin, it's blocked. So you have semi-trucks, like, you have about 53 foot semi-trucks stuck over there, they don't know where to go. So it's in there, we open Kniff, we're not doing on the trade side any work, so they can pass through. So I think we're doing the wrong, we did it in the wrong time, where Kniff's closed, because I have my drivers who drive through there, and other companies that drive through there, like, they're got stopped.
Is Edwin, you know, well, I mean, there's a lot of side streets that they could turn on there, but is Edwin actually a sanctioned street for the semis? I don't know, it's not...
Well, you got semi-trucks, you got companies that drives through that.
Well, they could, there are other streets that could be...
Should be, because there's all the trucking areas, delivery stuff down there.
And now it's closed because of construction.
From Buffalo to Alpine.
So I wanna know, who's Mr. Smarty Smarty that kind of started doing that traffic over there, and you get Kniff closed?
That's the plan from Hennessy, sets it out, if there's a traffic issue we can look at, and possibly trying to redo a detour, but Kniff should be opening up shortly.
Where is it gonna be opening? And my question is, why Kniff is closed from LRB8, it's called?
Probably for testing on the core samples, they won't open it until the concrete is at a certain stage.
But I'm saying, why not open it?
Days in the core, so...
Why not open it from Buffalo and LRB South, please?
That intersection was done quite a bit, you know, to, with Kniff, if you part Detroit, you know, close Detroit, that part's been all poured.
Hey, that's all poured to me. So my question...
Yeah, you can't drive on it two weeks.
My concern is, where these truck drivers turn around?
And are those other streets?
They're not being, I drove.
No, they're not gonna be able to turn from Avaline, Edwin, Troll Bridge, Belmont, any of those, it's gonna have to be Edwin, because they're leaving the trucking company at Buffalo and Holbrook going north side.
So it must have tried to get on to that little stretch of businesses there, they may just have to go around all together, continue uphill it and turn down and come back around. I mean, this is, this is the plight of a lot of construction.
I've already sent a message earlier today to...
It's gonna get worse, and it gets better with all the stuff we're about to do.
But it should be something that needs to be addressed first, before you guys do start doing anything, because if we have one main road that's closed, why the heck are we gonna start doing another construction on another road? Now you got all these semi-trucks trying to back up? Because I want there at least seven trucks to reverse.
So I'm thinking they're coming down Buffalo then, maybe we close Buffalo altogether for non-residential traffic, and then anyone, any of those trucks gotta go along with it, for now, until we're done.
I get, Ms. Connor? Yeah, I put in a request this morning with Charles, with Hennessy on this issue, so I should be getting a resolution to that.
I mean, at this point...
We can't delay the project as it goes by the consent forms, they move to the next street with the highest consent forms. If we tell them no, then we're a violation, we pay the contractor money, because they're not, we're not working them. So it's gonna, this construction season is gonna get tight. This probably won't be the first time.
And also, they're moving pretty fast now too, so they may not be there very long. I mean, this could be a minor inconvenience.
My concern is now you cause more traffic. Now you hold the whole road, so semi-trucks can, hey, come on, reverse, and reversing the semi-trucks is not that easy. If you have a job or something.
So let's maybe just close Holbrook through traffic, so that they can't even get to Buffalo. Because they're probably turning from Conant on to Holbrook, on Buffalo.
From Holbrook and Bullin Street, yeah.
So let's, let's close eastbound Holbrook to non...
And I'm sure that's what Charles is gonna do, because I brought it up with him this morning, so...
Now you're holding for, commercially, you're holding for Edwin.
Everything non-residential, I mean, I suppose a box truck wanted to sneak through, or there was something, they're gonna call us, I mean, there's not a ton of businesses over there probably taking fifty, thirty trucks.
I talked to Kwalski today, that was the one that required...
Was there, Kwalski's going that way?
That way. Mike Kwalski.
All right, well, we're gonna do the best we can to work it out, but I mean, it's, there's gonna be some inconvenience, it's not gonna be perfect.
Might just think about it previously, you know, we start moving by here, we have road dark, that's...
Yeah, all right, so, yeah, I don't think we can come up with a solution now, but we hope that these alleys gets done, you know, not like last time when you had the money, they postponed it a year until the summer. So hopefully this gets done this year.
I was personally, not only was John, but I was personally out there talking to the contractor, the owner on site, you know, telling him to go anywhere, so I...
I mean, it's okay, but they have to know that people are watching what we do.
Yeah, I mean, I mean...
Last time when we announced to the people, you know, those who were concerned about those alleys, and we told them it would be done by December based on the list, and then the news came that there is no material that they are using, and so we postponed it a year until the summer, and people kept calling us liars after we announced based on these that we discussed in the city council.
Yeah, and on the list too, we took the alley, the other thing that we have to keep in mind is there's a design stage to them. So when everybody keeps changing the alleys or the format of which one we're doing or not doing, then basically, we have to start engineering all over on the alleys, and then I've been doing televising on the alleys to recognize problems with inside the sewer system that can be fixed before we put a brand-new alley over it, so we're not tearing up a brand-new alley to fix a sewer leak that's already been disconnected. So that's why it's important to come up with a list, stick to the list, not change the list, because I'm sending out the engineers, they're doing, they have to do toe holes, they can do the engineering and curving, the designs on it, and that's what takes the time. So it's not just picking out and go there and pour, there's a lot that goes into these alleys before they reach a lot.
And then my request, if you don't mind, before putting these alleys to, for research or study, send it to council mayor, let them see which one do you recommend, if we have to make a change before we start having Hennessy, you know, to do it.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of these here, I mean, we didn't send it to you guys as a whole, but it 100% has your consideration in it.
I'm gonna save it next time, so we don't have to, oh, no, do this alley, do this alley.
I knew that, Hennessy not gonna take that decision? Yeah, we gonna take the decision.
We've manipulated this one a lot.
Let me tell you what's happened. The $500,000 project, I did it two times, okay? It's not 500, we have more than that, we just have that. First time we did 500,000, and I was for, off for two years, because I ran for mayor. For the, that two years, that take whole project to, specifically what Hennessy request. Then I came back, I said, what's going on with my 500,000? Oh, they use for the, this area, it was recommendation by Hennessy, first priority. Then I said, no, I'm not gonna accept that one, let's go the pilot project. Then I made the pilot project, 500,000, assign a specific alley name. So I agree with you, and you're gonna make that happen.
Oh, wow.
Those money, not let them use where they want, he make a one...
Request one.
Uh, the request and the justification. He wanna do the, never to this one first, or he wanna do this one first? Both are important, I understand, because doctor, he almost tried to get out from here. We are the one requesting him stay here, so that case here, business, busy business, important business, will be first priority, and we take the decision, let him know, and then he will talk to me. A contractor also, they're gonna do the couple of cities business. So what they do, do a little bit here, a little bit over there, a little bit over there, try to keep there. But this one we cannot control, most of the contractor doing that, but maybe little more request or somehow let again to bring everything done by before December, because when mayor speak, according to the paper, it's not done, and he looks back, oh, you guys like it?
Yeah, we wanna get a head on the televising, and that's our goal.
And that's why I have to have it in record, that's why I asked you.
Okay, let's go.
As the mayor said, we actually called us liars.
Some people tell us some bad thing, even though it's not our control.
It's not 100% in our control either, I mean, we're pushing them as hard as we possibly can, but, I mean, in the end, things do happen. You know, I mean, John and I are on Hennessy daily, we're on the other contractors daily, we're visiting the sites, I mean, we're pushing them hard, I mean, and this, even what we're doing now, it did not come together easily. I mean, this is, this is a lot of behind the scenes to get this to where we're at right now.
3:42 in the morning.
If somebody wanna live in one month, he can open the construction company.
We're gonna find out. I gotta live 100 minutes.
Okay, let's go.
Mayor and Simon's bidding the next time.
We got up with an ally.
Okay, let's go, council hall.
Just to let you know, we partially fixed the alley behind the clinic, you see the very same pictures, on all costs, so...
Does this discussion, is this discussion for all the next four?
Oh, so?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, please.
I think you really combined them all together.
Yes.
Well, the next, these three, actually.
I understand, you wanna take yes, no.
Okay, so we're voting on letter M, resolution 135.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Orfi.
Yes.
Councilman Five.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution one thirty-five approved. Our next one, vote, over five.
No, we have to make that decision.
I'm committed.
All right, the next one.
Dispend the rules, do it the way she says.
And resolution two twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three, one thirty-six, approving award of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, road resurfacing, design and construction service to Hennessy engineers.
Motion.
Second. All right, those are the streets, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Can we vote?
I mean...
I think I have a discussion.
We have a discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Seven signed streets, right, that we are doing?
So we, we understand that there's other ones that Council's interested in as well. We're working on those, but these were the ones that were ready to roll, so.
You're gonna change.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't wanna not do these and wait to get the other ones done. So we're trying to keep the momentum going. So, but there's others that Council's brought to our attention that we're focusing on, so.
All right.
All right. Councilman Five.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Mayor, resolution one thirty-six approved.
Thank you. Next one, oh, resolution twenty twenty-three, one thirty-seven, approving award of twenty twenty-three lead service line placement program, design and construction service to Hennessy engineers.
Motion. Second.
All right. Mr. Mayor, real quick, this one is basically our, we're looking to get another contractor in here. So Hennessy's doing the prep work. Hopefully, we're gonna have dual contractors going at it on the lead service lines, which in our opinion will spur competition. You know, when they gotta look at their competitor across the street doing it, we'll see what happens.
Plus, we need to get those done in order to do resurfacing.
Correct.
We don't wanna do the streets until lead service lines are done. And the only way to stay ahead of the streets is to stay ahead of the lead service lines.
So we're significantly throwing resources at this right now, so.
Mr. Chair. My question is, can you guys send us a list of streets that will get the service lines replaced so we know which one's not?
Yeah, no, we're, we're working on that now. I mean, again, we have some in the hopper that we wanna get done because we're already in the process of it. But the next batches we go to, Council and Mayor are gonna be intricately involved. I mean, we're gonna be reaching out to you guys. Hey, what do you think the community wants best now?
You can know, what do you think about this project? Can we be out of the service?
No, no, no.
That's ten years, Councilman.
Ten years, another ten years.
We do seven percent of the houses every year. That's like three, three seventy-seven.
One investment, one idea.
That's what we're doing. This is what this is, Councilman.
Yeah, we're obligated to do three hundred and sixty-six this year. But the current contractor we have now, they have a pretty good incentive to get four hundred done this year. That doesn't count this additional contractor, which about seven, roughly seven to eight thousand per house to do the lead service lines. We should be able to obtain beyond that number by quite a bit.
We actually just called our contractor on the carpet the other day and are holding their feet to the fire on some clauses here. So they either gotta get moving or else. And then this is also our attempt to get another contractor going at the same time, so.
All right. Okay, the next one, go.
Vote. Resolution one thirty-seven, Councilman Five.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution one thirty-seven approved.
Thank you. Next one, resolution twenty twenty-three, one thirty-eight, accepting the terms of agreement for T F twenty-two, National One Eight Six, Grand Center Park, and Temps Stadium Restaurant renovation project.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I believe this is the last one who accepts on this. Again, you know, we have to wait for all these grants to process through and become official before we can start bidding things. And that's the delay with the bathrooms here because we're juggling all these grants. It's very delicate. I mean, there's a lot of money coming at it, but we gotta make sure all our ducks in a row before we move forward. I believe this is the last one to accept finally.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Five.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution one thirty-eight approved.
Okay, thank you. And that was the last one. Now we move to the reports and from, we're not gonna have long reports. Start with mine. I don't have much to say. I just wanna, last meeting, we didn't have a meeting because it was the election. So I wanna congratulate those who won the election. And, and, you know, I hope that they work harder. So many people will come out to vote because the turnout wasn't that great. Ninety percent, forty-five hundred vote only. Compared to my election, forty-nine hundred went out. So that's almost just fifty percent of the people. So we need people to go out and vote and I wish you all good luck. That's all I, I went to so many events that I can't remember over the past month, so. I was just fighting for, for tonight. Mr. Mayor, what can I add anything to say?
Yeah, thank you, Amtrak. Everybody come out, vote. That's all I can say.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I wanna thank everybody that showed up here tonight. Just a reminder, as we have our sweepers around the city, just to remind our residents that whenever there's signs on your street, please park somewhere else, move your vehicle so a sweeper can go and clean the street and do not park until those signs are removed. Because sometimes they, they go twice to sweep the street. So please, you know, until those signs are out, not on the street, you're, you're fine to park. And nothing else, have a great night.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Amtrak citizens, to come up last August eighth for the primary election. And I thanks to the winner who comes to the ballot. And I request to all those citizens, please come up November seventh for final election, choose your candidate, vote from right. And at the moment, I thank you for those things. And I really, really thanks to people of Ukraine, their Independence Day. And I fully support the people who fighting for their independence against Russia. Thank you. Okay.
Yes, Councilman. Smiley, sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone staying today and the meeting. All the peoples are there. And City Manager, Attorney, Chief Police, Alana, everyone. And thank you all, the City of Amtrak, all residents, they fought for me for the election premiering. I wish to be more vote and the general election, because this election premiering is small vote. I need everybody come, uh, vote and the general election. We need the number same, the mayor, when he say, he is lacking. He got forty-nine hundred vote, the whole election, general election, not for him, for the whole. Yeah, whole. We need to see this number again. Because the City of, uh, City Council very important. We need to see the all people come out. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Manager, report, do you have anything?
No.
Apparently, Council would like me to remain silent. I actually was thinking about removing it from the agenda altogether because I speak all evening long.
So there, nothing to say?
Just put in for a city clerk.
No, I am not adding a city clerk. All right. Public comment. The city clerk speaks enough throughout the meeting.
You're welcome. Good luck. Two minutes.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I would like to reiterate that the intent of public comment is often for the public to provide input and ask questions about the agenda items. By, and by limiting public comment, you're limiting the public's ability to do that. I also have a question about posting the public comment. If that happens after the meeting is over, that means that those voices weren't heard or considered when you were discussing and voting on the agenda topics. That doesn't make any sense to me. I also have a question. I just checked, the added resolutions and any attachments are not on board docs yet. So, just now. Okay. Because it's really important to make that information available to the public. And then I just hope to see everybody at the Labor Day festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know, they're gonna be in, right here, additions and conclusions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Two minutes, sir.
Two?
Two minutes.
Okay, so I was deeply offended by a comment that one of our, I know I have to speak to the mayor, so I'm gonna speak to the mayor. I was deeply offended by a comment made by one of the council members earlier saying that people come down here saying la, 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 and they say the same thing over and over again because they have nothing else to do and, you know, like, really, seriously, you think that, that's the way you feel about the public that comes in here and talks?
Some of them.
Yes. Well, okay. First of all, this kind of sending flagrant disregard for the democratic rights of public is unacceptable. What about the O M A about this rules? What about the Open Meetings Act? Are there rules about public in that? Have you read that? Nineteen seventy-seven, I think? You know, I didn't create the second public comment, I guess, by the way. That was a lie.
It was the request by you.
It was not started by me. And I've been here many years before you were ever on this council. I'm sorry, then this council was ever on the council. So, you know, I can tell a lot by the way you responded to that subject matter. It's a personality thing. You expressed your personality by answering that question. I know, I know you all personally. And I know a person who really doesn't like the public that much and doesn't accept the democratic process. I really respect people who wanna, actually wanna hear the public because we all live in the city together. This, your personality show. A true, a true democracy is when it includes a voice of people. You have to do this. Whether you like what we see or not, I mean, if we talked about this councilman for the next half an hour, maybe that would be accepted kind of comment, public comment. But sometimes we say, say things that aren't interesting. The rest of you know, you know who you are. You know how you relate to, ask for another minute. You know who you are and I respect you for that because you want to listen. And you got a lot of work to do, I appreciate that. And I'm not coming down here just to be funny with you guys. I've done this for twenty-two years coming down these council meetings because the public has a right to be part of this process. And we don't need to be insulted. Now, as far as the ethnic intimidation, the Justice Department and the FBI have reports on this. That, of eight thousand, eight crimes in this country. More than sixty percent of, about race and ethnicity. There's like four thousand crimes in that area as opposed to gender orientation or sexual orientation, it's like one thousand, four times more. This is a serious problem. Ethnic intimidation, anti nationality, anti...
Thank you, Bill.
So it is the right thing on that part. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's one more thing that, I want to take a small moment and congratulate our city attorney on his newborn baby. He named him, he named him Uday Junior. So now we have Uday Senior and Uday Junior, by the way. So he hasn't been sleeping, by the way.
I have not.
We have a few errors.
This is actually more peaceful than home today. This wasn't so bad.
Motion, Chair?
All right. Nine fifty-seven.
Do you all agree to adjourn?
Yes.
So you wanna stand?
Oh, no.
All right. We'll move to a closed session. Where are you going?
Oh, my God.[1759.12]